I'd like to call this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Please rise and join with me in reciting the pledge and remain standing as Jerry Dusenberry from First Christian, Monticello Christian Church leads us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we truly thank you for the season that's upon us. We thank you for the hope and the joy, the peace that you promised at the birth of your son, Jesus. Father, we thank you for the wisdom that you will grant to the leaders of our communities tonight. Pray, Lord, for good outcomes and thank you for all the contributions that each person will make, Jesus.
Please, Joe.
Hi, Tom. You were late.
Ms. Muse?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Boat? Mr. Brock?
Here.
Mr. Burris?
Here.
Mr. Coon?
Here.
And a quorum.
Thank you. Public participation, did anyone sign in, John? We have no one participating in person. Remote participation, this is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conferences. Is there anyone this evening more?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda. Approval of documents and actions items is listed. Claims report, claims dated November 23rd, 2021 through December 13th, 2021. Meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, November 22nd, 2021. Permit report, November 2021. Fire report, November 2021. Police report, November 2021. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Agreed.
Is there a second? Are there any comments or questions before we proceed with a vote?
What was the stockpile question? Go ahead, question. What was the stockpile? What was that for?
Uh, rock, sand.
Okay, I didn't know what stockpile you're really talking about. Okay, that's all I need.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Door installed on Leash Farm.
Uh, I think that was the north, on the fire station side at least. Uh, that's, they take care of the buildings and grounds there. It was on the north side there.
From parking lot, so.
Yep.
Anyone else? I almost cut everyone off this evening. Uh, can I have a roll call, please, Jill?
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
And Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank Shelley Crawford for the fantastic Christmas parade we had in Monticello this year. She said that she really didn't do anything special, but just the way the parade was handled at the beginning, with the lineup and everything, it just worked a lot better this year than it has. I'd like to thank all city staff and others who participated and helped in making it such a success. Uh, moving on to new business. Ordinance 2021-69, an ordinance levying taxes for all corporate purposes for the city of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois for the fiscal year commencing on January 1st, 2022 and ending on December 31st, 2022. Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With your permission, I'd like to just read real quick not only ordinance 2021-69, but 2021-70 and 2021-71, the other tax levies.
That's fine.
Um, so ordinance 2021-69 is the property tax levy, and in accordance with the truth of taxation law, uh, city council approved the estimated tax levy entered November 22nd. City council meeting, you were presented at that meeting with a draft copy of the property tax levy ordinance presented to you tonight. Uh, the FY 2022 budget includes a 4.9% increase in the property tax revenues, which this tax levy will implement. Uh, ordinance 2021-70 and ordinance 2021-71 are our special service area number three, Sage Meadows, and special service area number four, Walden Pond. They were established in 2017, and they established the maximum amount of 50 cents per $100 of equalized assessed value for each lot located in each subject territory respectively. Um, they are, uh, they will remain in effect. We will do this every year through fiscal year 2038. It is recommended city council approve ordinance 2021-69, ordinance 2021-70, and ordinance 2021-71 as presented to you this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2021-69, an ordinance levying taxes for all corporate purposes for the city of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois for the fiscal year commencing on January 1st, 2022 and ending on December 31st, 2022? Agreed. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
And Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2021-70, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of a tax for the fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2022, ending on December 31st, 2022 for special service area number three of the city of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve? So, move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? I think Terry addressed everything in his statements, so unless you have a question, go on. Hearing or seeing none, a roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2021-71, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of a tax for the fiscal year commencing on January 1st, 2022, ending on December 31st, 2022 for special service area number four of the city of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois. Is, I would entertain a motion to approve?
Agreed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2021-72, a resolution authorizing the signing of the union contract between the city of Monticello and the city of Monticello Police Union. Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Chief Carter for his assistance with this collective bargaining agreement, uh, our attorney, Orna Geiler, uh, the police union steward, Jason Schumard. Uh, we've worked, uh, fairly long on this for several months now. Uh, but the current collective bargaining agreement is due to expire December 31st of this year. Um, and as we discussed at the council level, uh, I'll kind of go over just some of the new things with the, the, the new proposed collective bargaining agreement. The term, uh, we all, the council indicated that they would be willing to do a 48-month contract. The current CBA was a 36-month. Uh, we added a longevity pay, uh, step after 20 years of service in police department. Uh, we increased the starting pay to $21.10. We adjusted the holidays, uh, as the council recently agreed to add those two holidays starting next year. Um, increased the clothing allowance to $750. I think it was $500. And, uh, general wage increases as previously approved by the city council, beginning on each January 1st of each subsequent years through 2025. Um, again, this current CBA is due to expire at the end of this month. It is recommended city council adopt resolution 2021-72 approving labor agreement between the city of Monticello and the eternal order of police labor council, thus allowing your son and police chief Carter to execute the CBA.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve resolution 2021-72, a resolution authorizing the signing of the union contract between the city of Monticello and the city of Monticello Police Union? Agreed. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions before we proceed? Thank you for spelling it out so well. Hearing or seeing none, can I have a roll call, please, Jill?
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Boat? Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
And Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution 2021-73, a resolution to accept an electric supply agreement for the city accounts and streetlight accounts. Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, we are in a contract for each of these, the purchase of electricity for not only the city accounts, but also the streetlight accounts. It expires this year. That was the, uh, the current contract. It's a 36-month, uh, 36-month. So, Good Energy is the city's electric aggregation consultant. Jared McCorris, I think, is the individual joining us tonight from Good Energy. Uh, don't hold that against him, he's a good guy. But he has asked, he's worked hard on giving us these, these quotes. They change daily, if not hourly, so I, hey, put it on to me, the latest, uh, prices. So, tonight, some blank spaces in the legislation as far as who we want to sign a contract with and the term of that contract. So, uh, the best supplier with AEP Energy, uh, and I would propose either a 24-month or a 36-month contract. Uh, and that would be 0.05919 kilowatt-hour for 24 months, or 0.05963 for 36 months. Uh, the current contract again was 36-month and 37-month. Uh, they were two separate contracts. We divided them into one contract this term. Uh, that contract executed in 2018 was where this is 0.56 cents per kilowatt-hour. 2018, one of them was about four cents, and the other one was about five cents. Um, indicators that Jared McCorris is, that looks at, the indicators are saying that AMRIP, it's estimated that they would be at about seven cents when they redo their contracts in, I think, maybe. So, Jared, are you, do you want to add anything?
Um, no, that's, that's accurate. Um, I think that everything that you've said is spot-on. Uh, thank you for having me. And, um, uh, the real question before council is, really want to entertain a two-year or a three-year contract. In years past, you guys have always stayed in those, in those type of timeframe, the market is up. And so, um, I, we do anticipate that there will be some, at some point, leveling off. Um, uh, it's never a good idea to buy long when it's high, um, but the price between the two and the three-year is, is minute, is really noticeable. Um, this will get you under the AMRIN, AMRIN reset whenever that takes place come, uh, May of '22.
So, I recommend, uh, signing the contract with AEP Energy. Uh, and I would, I would propose 36-month.
Would someone make a motion to that? Will someone make a motion for that? Don't move. Is there a second?
Second.
So, just to clarify, this is something that the residents could buy and choose if they want instead of.
No, this is just strictly this city stuff. Okay? But we're not, we're still on the, on the one, the aggregate for the city. We signed that one year, year ago.
We're correct.
Months ago.
Correct. This is, uh, this is not the residential program. This is your city-owned facilities and your streetlights.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Is, uh, did I get a?
You have a motion.
A motion and a second. Any other questions before we vote? You get older, forget, you know, if you get sidetracked. Can I have a roll call, please, Jill?
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Jared, for being here.
Thank you. Wish I could have been there in person. Have a good day.
Okay, so that's, okay. Yes. Resolution 2021-74, a resolution of the city council of the city of Monticello approving the city budget for fiscal year 2022. Is there a motion to approve the budget as presented? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Terry, do you have anything you want to add? We've been over this stuff. There's no surprises, I don't think.
We've been over this. I appreciate the council's efforts, obviously, year in and year out, dating back to early October this year, discussing, uh, I've laid out all the increases, uh, that have been proposed and any additions from last council meeting. I applaud the council's efforts to reinvest what I always considered reinvesting in the city operations, city personnel, city fleet. Uh, I know it is greatly appreciated from each and every department. Um, so, uh, that's all I would like to add, Mr. Stone.
Thank you. Does anyone have a comment or question before we proceed?
I did have one question. When will we know what the CPPRT will look like? Um, but we've estimated what that is in the budget. What, what point will they give us a firm indication? What point in the year?
We would prefer for the, for FY '22.
Yeah.
Um, the state's fiscal is different than our fiscal.
Right.
So, the state estimated for their fiscal '22, which would end in June. My hearing of '22 would definitely, their estimating would be 1.9 million.
So, when, when does that get distributed?
Throughout.
Okay.
The remainder, remaining months to then. We won't know what.
What '23 will look like.
We won't know what from July to December, what that will look like.
Okay.
And we're already in there FY '22.
So, will you come back, let's say when we know that, to the city council so we can discuss, whether it's open session, closed session, whatever, what to do if we, if there is an excess? Or will you just simply make a recommendation to the council, or, you know, what happens to that once we know what that number is?
Well, it's always reflected in the budget report you get monthly.
Right.
So, you can see where we stand in January, February, March, so on and so forth.
Okay.
Uh, if we get any kind of indicator from state, Illinois, we definitely will share that information that, uh, you know, there's CPPRT estimated for FY '23, we will share that information when it's published.
Okay. Yes. But I mean, in terms of, is there, you know, when, when we know that, have a plan to do if we, if there's an excess, or do they just roll into the budget, roll into the?
Well, I think it's, it's traditionally just rolled into, into what, the budget, and we have, if seen fit at the end of the fiscal year, if we have money that need, can be spent, we just determine that we're going to spend it.
At the end of our fiscal.
Yes. Okay, very good. Thank you.
You can either amend the current.
Or you can, we can always amend. I mean.
Right.
There's, there's possibilities.
Okay.
Did that answer your question? Thank you. Anyone else?
Did we, we had a surplus this year, didn't we? Don't we end up this year with surplus?
Yes.
Is it pretty well balanced out the deficit on the new one? Close, I mean.
So, so we'll, we'll have a surplus, uh.
In 2021 of?
Of roughly 1.3 million.
Okay, we're fine then.
Thereabouts.
Anything else?
We're done.
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone else? We have a motion, we have a second. Can we have a vote?
Mm-hmm. Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Terry, once again, for your efforts, Maura. Thank you for your efforts. I thank all city staff, department heads, for all of their cooperation. I think it ran more smoothly this year than it ever has. Everyone came in with tight numbers, and we didn't have to do much dilly-dally with it to bring it in line. So, appreciate those efforts. Uh, cancellation of the December 27 meeting of the city council. I need a motion to cancel this meeting. We, in the past, we've had problems, uh, sometimes had problems getting a quorum to attend because so many people travel for the holidays. Is there a motion to, uh, cancel the December 27, 2021 meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to all their persons' report. Mary, are you, are you, are you still out of breath? Are you okay?
Fortunately, they did not ask me to perform tonight.
Oh, that's good. That is a comfort.
Um, I, I just would like to commend city workers again for just the way Monticello looks as we have a number of visitors coming for the, the different events. And, um, it's, it's a great town, and our city does a great job taking care of it. And so, please extend those thoughts to them.
I like extending those thoughts.
We get to do that quite often, too.
I do it every time.
I know it. I know it. I think it's great. Mr. Brock?
Uh, quick, we jumped by one thing, and I didn't have a chance to get back before the mayor did, so I'm gonna direct this to Terry. Uh, in the, uh, or in the fences, there's a $2,200, $2,300 fountain that got replaced. What's that add, and what happened to the old one?
Uh, was that under the wreck? Was it? Rotary parlor?
Rotary parlor. I noticed it was gone some months back, but did it freeze up or something? The kids broke it or something happened to it?
Um, I don't know exactly what happened to it, but that was the, we replaced that one of the, for.
I hope people enjoy drinking out of it. That's, that's a nice water fountain. Yeah, go ahead, please. Oh, well, good.
That's even better, isn't it?
That's even, that's even better. And, uh, again, I, I just, I want to thank the city for its employees for all they've done in, in the past couple of months trying to keep things going as well as they have. I noticed, uh, we did participate in that parade Saturday, threw a whole bunch of candy out on the street, and lo and behold, Monday morning, it was gone. So, we went around the street sweeper, did a great job up and down because they took care of all of it. So, I, I do appreciate that, that it didn't draw the, every squirrel in the country out on the, on those streets. It looked really good. I want to wish you all a very happy holiday, too.
Rodney?
Can I add to that? Merry Christmas.
Very, very, well, Merry Christmas is a nice thought. Michael?
Um, last week, I had the pleasure of attending the governor's conference on tourism at Navy Pier, um, which is part of my day job. But I did want to report that, uh, is after the, the governor addressed, uh, people there, we, uh, as an organization, give him a token of our appreciation for what he's done over COVID for, to support tourism. And the token of appreciation came from Prairie Fire Glass in Monticello.
Oh, nice.
About a mask.
What's that?
About a mask?
Not a mask. It was a.
Cool. Great. Glad to hear that.
Thomas?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Pam?
Nothing.
Wow. Tammy?
Nothing.
Nothing. Ashley?
I think it's all been said.
Yeah.
Happy holidays.
Happy, happy holidays and Merry Christmas to everyone in the community and especially to you people in the room. Appreciate all your efforts. Uh, police chiefs' report.
Yep. He saw our numbers, so we'll go on to that. So, we did have shop with the cops Saturday. It was great. We had a few kids that couldn't attend based on close contact and some had COVID. Uh, we appreciate them not coming. We had a total of 28 kids, 16 officers, and over $6,000 worth of gifts.
Awesome.
Not that yet. There's some families that couldn't attend for other reasons, and so we are working to get them some, some Christmas gifts and stuff, too. So, it's ongoing between now and Christmas. And, uh, so, so, with Christmas, Merry Christmas, everybody. Happy New Year.
John, I was in shock Saturday morning. I heard all these sirens going. I thought, holy mackerel, did the, is this square on fire, or did, did four buildings fall over somewhere? Then I remembered, I saw you going down, uh, Washington Street. I said, oh, yeah, it's shop with the cop morning. And I saw the limo go, and I, I knew what was going on. So, appreciate all of your efforts in making that such a success. Fire case report, John Rumpke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we had some party last month. We did auto electrification of the parking lot here. Uh, Ms. Stevens bought our two cars and cut up, actually piled them on top of each other, yeah, like it was a, a major wreck. And we, uh, cut the tops off them, cut the doors off them, and so forth. Got to work with our tools. It was a really good training, really good training. Uh, Second Wing River Valley, the Veterans Day Parade. Then we came back and put the final touches on our training schedule for next year. Um, we always get input from all our members and, uh, come up with a training schedule to, to meet the needs of firefighters. Uh, and the last week, we had our Thanksgiving dinner with the fire department. Uh, we deep fried some turkeys and had some smoke, and people brought in some side dishes and stuff, and we, we ran 30 calls last month. And finally, firefighter Austin Wiggins and his wife Allison had their first child, Aiden Wiggins, on November 23rd. So, congratulations to them. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, John. Thanks for all of your efforts. Okay, city administrators' report. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to extend a, a big thank you to city staff for all their efforts, uh, this year. Uh, and a lot of things have gone on, um, and perhaps the city has a wonderful staff, a wonderful public works department, uh, police, fire, uh, you can't say enough about them. Um, everybody's very professional. Um, and the folks that enter that phone up there, you realize they're not getting a, a call to say I love you. Uh, they're getting a call to complain about Waterville or a name and so. They always, always remain very professional. Our public works department remains professional when we're out there representing, uh, not only, uh, not only me, but this council as well. And everybody, uh, truly does a tremendous job. Uh, and then, real quick, um, this past weekend, we had, since we have the lights installed at the Rotary Centennial Park, we, we thought we would do an event. at the Rotary Centennial Park, we, we thought we would do an event up there this year. Uh, and then we had a Chris Overly tribute, uh, this year. Friday got canceled, and Saturday we, uh, it ran from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. It takes a lot of effort from a lot of people to make that happen. And I would estimate there was 800 to 100 people up there. Uh, we blocked off, uh, four, two roads, Main Street, State Street. Uh, so a great big thank you to Police Chief John Carter and Lieutenant Terry Jones. Uh, they assisted with that. Uh, Piatt County Sheriff Bogzang and Deputy Ernst assisted with that. Uh, Champaign Police Department Honor Guard were on site. Presented Champaign PD flag and the American flag. Uh, and then Jim Barsik and Clayton Dobson. Jim programmed that light show. He was very proud of it. He did an awesome job. Uh, there were some glitches. It's called technology. Uh, but Jim adapted, overcame, improvised, and made it happen. Uh, it was a, it was an awesome event. And, and I know that Amber and those in attendance were very proud, uh, to have the city of Monticello do that. So, uh, I can't thank those that, uh, that showed up and, and made that event what it was. So, again, thank, thank you all. Uh, thanks, city council, obviously, for all your efforts with the budget again this